Alderman Moore absent, Alderman Pannaleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Acting Chairman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent, Acting Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May 17th, Committee of the Whole Meeting, could I have a motion approved?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation of a wetland restoration project at the Lake Forest Country Day School, and I believe, is it Mike Robinson is going to be doing the presentation?
I am going to begin the presentation, so thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Robinson, I'm the Headmaster at Lake Forest Country Day School, and on behalf of the students, teachers, and parents, I thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. Our exciting project involves the restoration of a portion of our campus to its natural state as an ecosystem of open prairie, wetlands, and savannah, creating an extraordinary educational site for our students and a place of enjoyment for area residents through our partnership with Open Lands. I'm joined this evening by a number of school leaders, students, alumni, and friends of the school, and as a course of our agenda Fred Whacker, Chairman of the Board of Trustees, will describe what the land looks like now. John Centel and Stephen Christie of Open Lands will speak further about the impact of our public-private partnership and what the land used to look like. LFCDS teachers and students will talk about how the school teaches students to love and value the natural resources around us, as well as how the site will be used as an environmental and conservation science laboratory. And then LFCDS alumni Amanda Bezorgi and Jean Green will share some thoughts on the impact of their LFCDS education as a springboard for a legacy commitment to the environment and to this community. Again, thank you very much, and I'll now turn the podium over to Mr. Fred Whacker.
Thank you very much for allowing us to come before you this evening, and would like to let you know how appreciative we as a school are for people like Kathy and Ramesh who've really helped us get to this point through kind of planning and discussing the project and what we're hopeful to do. So here's a view of, if you could go back, Michael, just for a minute, that's the Green Bay entrance of the school, and to the south there is a seven-acre parcel that's part of the Country Day School property, which is the subject of tonight's presentation. The next slide shows the aerial view of the site, and also a sketch that Stephen Christie will be speaking about in greater detail this evening. The Country Day School has been, that's a view from approximately Western Avenue. The Country Day School has been in the community for almost 125 years. We're very proud of our longstanding position in the community and the support that the city has given our school most recently, and most notable in the renovation of our campus. This evening, we're talking about a project that we've had a dream to pursue for about 10 years, and through a wonderful, unexpected gift from a day school family a couple of years ago, we were at last able to try to realize this dream, which is to take this beautiful seven-acre site, which has been overgrown and fallen into decrepitude by invasive species, broken-down fence like you see there, no longer working drainage structures and so on and so forth, and we want to turn it back into a natural classroom and into the hidden gem that we know it is. We knew we had something special by going out there, but we didn't realize the extent of what we had until we started discussing with Open Lands how we could do this project together, because we're an educational institution. Open Lands is an incredible, longtime steward of community property, and they are enthusiastically with us on this. So it's my great pleasure to introduce John Centel, who is going to tell you a little bit more about the partnership. John?
Thank you Fred, good evening, members of the council. It is a real pleasure to be here tonight and talk about this wonderful partnership with the day school, and what we think is a terrific project. Lake Forest Open Lands believes that the restoration project the school's undertaken really speaks to the core of what makes our community so unique, a community that not only recognizes our unique natural heritage, but also understands that the many, many benefits we all receive when we get involved in caring for our land. One thing that makes living here so special is our community's historical connection to our natural areas and to our open spaces, and people have heard me suggest in the past that, in a sense, Lake Forest could be defined as a conservation community, a place that really understands and has always understood how our natural areas, our natural heritage really improves our quality of life. From a purely, this is a great project, and from a purely habitat perspective, the school's plan to restore their five-acre woodland and wetland right in the heart of Lake Forest, recaptures a piece of our city's history, and also shows what we can do together in the future to restore our land. The area to be restored that you'll hear Stephen Christie describe in a moment is a special piece of Lake Forest history, a remnant, lakefront, forest, and wetland habitat, a type of area which has largely been lost to development in our community and elsewhere. However, when you scratch beneath the surface of this hidden landscape, there really is something special there, there really is a gem there, and for example, there are native trees hidden behind invasives that approach 200 years in age. And so Stephen will talk about this more in a minute, but while we're all very, very excited about the actual restoration component of this project, and how beautiful it's going to look when it's done, perhaps the real benefit of this project is the work we do here can be a template for the rest of our community to see. This can really become a model to show how we can recreate sustainable landscapes throughout our community, and then use them as educational opportunities for our children, and to engage others to do the same thing. One thing I love about this project is that the kids are actually going to be in the land doing some of the restoration work themselves, some real meaningful restoration work, and that's terrific. This will be a highly visible example of the kind of sustainable preservation work that can be accomplished throughout so many other parts of Lake Forest, and this particular landscape being recreated will then serve as an education and a research area for decades of students to come. So in terms of protecting our natural areas, we really can no longer think about borders. Everything we do in this town is all connected. Our community's natural heritage, our native heritage, is in our Open Lands preserves, but it's also in our campuses, it's in our backyards, and so there are so many areas in Lake Forest where this kind of work could be replicated, and this project can be the demonstration of how our private landscapes can be restored in a sustainable fashion, and once again, connected to the larger preserved areas that have anchored our community for so long. So for now, now what I'd like to do is to talk a little bit more on the specifics on this restoration, and I'd like to introduce someone who may know more about our native landscapes in Lake Forest than anyone else I know, and that's Stephen Christie. Stephen is not only a well-respected landscape architect, and I'd like to call him a restorationist, but he also holds the distinction as the very first Executive Director of Lake Forest Open Lands back in 1984, so he's been studying the history of these landscapes for a long, long time. So Stephen, if you could come up.
Lake Forest is a community, and the local landscape from the time of its founding is part of that community. Lake Forest Open Lands has worked to preserve that landscape for over 40 years to give Lake Forest citizens a sense of their cultural heritage. I show you here, which way, I gotta point at this thing, right, bottom one. There we go, good. I'm used to using slide projectors. I show you here some pictures of original Lake Forest landscapes, starting with a photograph taken in 1903. You can get a sense of the spaciousness and breadth of our region in earlier times. These properties you see now are largely preserved, and are huge and varied, but here and there, in our city, still exist smaller undiscovered gems. Lake Forest Country Day School holds one of these areas, an original remnant of our town's signature name, a lake forest, somehow saved over the last 125 years. But as you saw in the photographs Fred showed you, who can see it after decades of invasion by weedy and non-native trees and shrubs? Here are a few before and after pictures, taken from the exact same location, showing the rediscovery of our landscape heritage, all projects done by Open Lands over the last 35 years. And I call your attention, if I might, to this tree on the edge here, and if you think back to Fred's pictures, this is how it looks, their property, it's pretty much all the same, but when you go to work on it, look at what is revealed. You suddenly see a beauty that was hidden. Or this picture here with our ever-present friend, Mr. Buckthorn and other weedy species, hiding something that nobody saw until it was removed, which in this case was a remnant prairie, although my large friend there may imitate a buckthorn stand. That's one of our employees, wonderful guy, Jim Tunney. Although larger in scale than the proposal now before you, they show you a sweeping array, that a sweeping away of intrusive forces, again, weedy and non-native plants that have degraded the landscape, reveal a beauty that our town's founders once saw. Another picture here, again, our friend, Mr. Buckthorn, before and after. Notice how suddenly things open up, something that looked all the same and homogeneous as so much of life does today, reveals its inner beauty. The Country Day School project, recreating a wetland and savanna woodland, both landmarks of Lake Forest's original landscape, is all about returning cultural heritage to Lake Forest. It is an example that can be duplicated elsewhere in town, as Mr. Centel just mentioned. It is an opportunity for volunteer efforts to preserve Lake Forest's landscape, and a place to practice sustainable landscape preservation, in this case, as you all know, controlled burning that keeps our landscape healthy. Both pursuits, which, when done by local citizens, reflects their love for and investment in their own town. Most importantly, it is a nexus for education, research, and learning for future generations yet to come. And I'll point out quickly, as Fred mentioned, how this project worked. The bulk of the day school campus is up here. They have owned this land, this is where the Smith House used to be, right here, and they've owned all this property over to Western Avenue. This whole section here, through here, consists of upland oak woodlands and savannas, and then at the bottom, right against Green Bay Road, is a wetland. You'd hardly know it, because it's been drained for at least 75 years, and part of this project is an intent to put a water control structure in it, and refurbish the water that was in it before it was drained many, many years ago. The project will also include trails for education and learning, and the replanting of native grasses and flowers, so that this property returns to a situation that really speaks of what Lake Forest is all about. Thank you, and I want to introduce Mimi now.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm Mimi Aiston, and I'm an early childhood educator at Lake Forest Country Day School. The forest and wetlands on the Lake Forest Country Day School campus have great importance for the education of our youngest students. Our early childhood program serves children from two to five years old. Because of the access we have to these natural areas, we do not have to take the smallest children off-campus for field trips. In the junior kindergarten program, for example, we visit the forest throughout the year so that children can observe seasonal changes. This spring, we studied Australia. A culminating activity for this unit of study included taking the children on a walkabout to the outback, the LFCDS forest, in which, oh, and to the billabong, the wetlands, in which they search for Australian animals, strategically placed ahead of time by the teachers. By visiting these areas throughout the year, we hope to ease any fears young children may have of the outdoors, and to instill in them a love and appreciation for the natural world. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Ross, who is our lower school science teacher.
So since my kids are older, we can take them off of school grounds. Lake Forest Country Day School has a wonderful partnership with Open Lands where kids continue to develop their love and appreciation for our natural world. At Open Lands, our students partake in hands-on programs studying the plants and animals of our local ecosystems, the prairie and the wetlands. These Open Land properties are very special places. You see the kids open up and learn in ways that traditional classrooms cannot provide. It's an amazing experience for me as an educator, as well as for my kids as lifelong learners. So further ado, here with us today is Kylie Rabjohns and Christopher Neal, who would like to share their experiences at Open Lands with you.
Hello, my name is Kylie Rabjohns, and I'm in third grade. I love taking hikes on our trips to Open Lands. We learn about plants and animals, what they eat, their habitats, and how they survive. We use magnifying glasses to look at the plants and animals closely. At Open Lands, we draw pictures of plants and animals, and we include details like the veins of the leaves. We also study about how plants and animals adapt to their environment. The leaders have us sit somewhere by ourselves to reflect on what we learned and our experiences in the prairie and wetlands. I also love studying about the life cycles of plants and animals. We use nets to catch animals that live in the prairie and wetlands. Then we study them very, very closely, but we always let them go back into their habitat, because that is a much better life for them than in a bucket. We also spend time in our own Lake Forest Country Day School Woods, looking at plants, animals, trees, and fungi. In both places, we learned the importance of keeping all things in nature safe.
So we also have Christopher, who's a fourth grader, who participated in a three-day program called Earth Keepers at Open Lands, and he's going to share his experiences with me.
Hi, I'm Christopher Neal, and I'm in fourth grade. During Earth Keepers, I learned many ideas that I can use in my own backyard. I have a greater understanding and respect for all that I see in nature and how I should take care of it. Everybody has to do their share, or else it will be a disaster for the earth. In this slide, we learned how the flow of energy begins with the sun and transfers through all living things. This is called the food chain. Everything in nature is interdependent. When one rope snaps, eventually all living items in the food chain are affected. Some will become extinct, and some will adapt. We work collaboratively in groups to understand the life cycles of what are called specks, often known as particles, of dirt, water, sun, and air. Using special tools like magnifying glasses, we observe many things in nature closely in order to understand them deeply. The activities you had to accomplish in order to earn keys were exciting. I was surprised by how much energy we really use when we aren't careful. What I learned will change what I do, what I do, so I'm more careful about my impact on the environment. Now I like taking shorter showers. Last fall, my classmates and I learned about the project on our school property during our leadership orientation. We spent time identifying and tagging trees that were invasive and needed to be removed, and trees that we want to save. I'm very excited that we have a chance to restore the area next year.
And I'll hand it over to Mr. Arthur, the upper school science teacher.
Hello, I'm Mark Arthur, upper school science teacher, and I have some seventh-grade students with me. We are excited about this opportunity of really a potential outdoor laboratory right next to our school. Preparing our students to do fieldwork and to apply scientific and ethical conduct of environmental stewardship is part of our underlying goal. I want to introduce Hannah, Libby, and Duncan, current seventh-grade students, who are going to share how they'll be using science, math, and technology with the restoration project. Hannah?
So we'll be utilizing, oh, wrong one. So during the initial stages, students will be collecting baseline data such as plant identification, soil type, soil chemistry, and contour of the land, and we will also be mapping the designated restoration area, including the location of surface water. We will also be sketching and using watercolors to portray the restored site, and we will video record transects of the property. Here's Libby.
We'll be utilizing technology with vernier-lab probes that have GPS capabilities. Some of our proposed activities are to test pH levels, measure cell respiration using vernier-gas sensors, analyze soil, record temperature and moisture values, and to geotag trees and other plants. We plan to analyze the area for evidence of pollutants as well. We'll use GIS as a tool to monitor habitat change and track wildlife. This will give us the ability to notice patterns about the future, or notice patterns of change to time, to make predictions about the future, and see how different aspects of the ecosystem are related and affect one another.
Here's Duncan.
After the data is collected, we can determine native plant species distributions, and learn to control the spread of invasive, non-native plants. Ultimately, we will write detailed reports that will be presented to the public comparing our data with other sites throughout Lake County, Illinois.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce two LFCDS alumni, Amanda Bezorgi and Jean Green.
Through my years at LFCDS, I discovered a passion for the environment. It started with these field trips to Open Lands at a young age with my class, and then Earth Keepers. However, as I got older, I began to realize that Lake Forest Open Lands was more than just a really cool place to visit with my class. It was something precious and rare that needed to be protected and taken care of. It was, with this growing interest in the environment, I joined two programs my eighth grade year. One was the Center for Conservation Leadership. It is an Open Lands program that is dedicated to fostering future environmental leaders. I was involved in the very first year of the program, and I'm currently continuing through the high school internship phase this summer. The second program was WOLFS. WOLFS is led by an eighth grader each year at LFCDS, who organizes workdays throughout the year with Open Lands, and gets other seventh and eighth graders involved. My goal through WOLFS was to get other kids at my school who are my own age as interested in the environment as I was. With a little piece of something like Open Lands in the school's own backyard, the students would be exposed to it every single day. For kids to have so much access to the environment at such a young age would nurture a growing passion through their years, and hopefully, a continuation of their involvement beyond their graduation.
And Jean Green?
I'm Jean Green, and you are probably all wondering, why on earth is she here? What does she have to add to all this? Well, I'm here for one thing, because I love this town, I really care about this town, and all the wonderful things that have happened to it and can happen to it, and certainly, this is one of the best things that could happen to it. I am also here because I love Lake Forest Open Lands. I've been involved with Lake Forest Open Lands for many, many years, and certainly all of you know what an asset Lake Forest Open Lands has been to our community. Hundreds of acres have been saved, preserved, and we have educated, I can't tell you how many children out there. So also, I have been involved with Lake Forest Country Day School, I'm equally proud to be involved with them. I went there, my children went there, and my mother went there, so you can see, it's been a long period. So I just think that this is a sensational opportunity for our town to add something very special, and I hope you all will be as enthusiastic as I am. I think it's extremely important for our young children to get out in nature. I have worries when I see my own grandchildren, who are, I think, too much texting and too much on their electronics, and I worry that they're not getting out, loving nature, animals, the rain, the majestic trees, et cetera. So I feel this is a sensational opportunity for children, for our town, and I just hope all of you will be as enthusiastic and positive as we are. Thank you, thank you for all your time, too.
Thank you for the presentation, if you're finished.
If you're finished, thank you for the presentation. As a former scout master, you're preaching to the choir when you talk about instilling a love of nature in our children. I think it's very important, and as Henry David Thoreau once said, "In wilderness is the preservation of the world." So I think what you're doing is fine. I have a technical question, and that is about the wetland and mosquito control. Is there anyone that can address how the wetland along Green Bay Road is going to handle mosquito control issues?
I could probably address that, sir, if I might.
Please, will you come to the podium? Please. I think you should come to the podium so the people on TV can, or watching TV can see you.
Oh, I see, television. Yeah.
The extent of water retention in this wetland is as yet unknown. These are known as vernal pools. They are springtime wetlands, they normally fill up, starting in March, and are full into June and July. Their tendency is then to dry out as we get into the hot summer months and go into the fall, and then they refill in the late fall, depending on the water levels and rainfall. That said, I cannot speak to the generation of mosquitoes, I know the mosquito species in this town, their range is usually a mile and a half to two miles when you run into them. They could be coming from anywhere. I do believe, having spent countless hours in forests like this that are infested with buckthorn and things like that, that the population counts are much, much higher, A, because of the lack of air and dryness, and B, the lack of predators that can get around to catch them, but that, I cannot answer your question completely, sir.
Okay, well, you've done a good job of responding, though.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, any other members of the council have?
I have one question. I was describing this project to my daughter, who some of you may remember, Claire, who's now a sophomore at Loyola Academy, and she said, "We used to play Capture the Flag in there, it was awesome." Are they, they're not going to stop that, are they? So I wanted to ask if they're still going to, she asked me to see if they'd still be able to play Capture the Flag. It's somewhat of a...
They could still play, it'd be a very different game, not as much buckthorn cover. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is opportunity for public comment. Anyone wish to comment? If not, we have half an hour to kill, and I haven't brought any poetry to read with me, so I'll ask Kathy, can you talk about maybe some of the items on the city council agenda?
Maybe I would ask Ramesh Kanapredi, city engineer, if you want to cover your item now, after people walk out.
Thank you very much.
Great job to everybody who presented.
Thank you. Very nice. Well.
I know.
Yeah, I have a tough time spelling it. The nice thing is, the Public Works Project clears out the...
Great, thank you.
And I'm going to go do the subdivision, too.
I'm hoping Ramesh doesn't take this personally, if I ever have that.
Good evening, members of the committee of the whole, mayor and the council.
Obviously, they were all here to see you.
I was going to say, I'll blame that for myself, like, the timing. They talked about environment and the sustainability, and I'm talking about payment, so I guess that scared them all, so...
Maybe they were here to hear the poetry, I'm sorry if I let them down.
But...
Staff is recommending awarding the annual payment contractual program to Shore Asphalt Services. As you are aware, in our November budget meeting, and also at the March budget meeting, we presented as part of our CIP, we tackled the payment in a three-part program. The major one is the overlay program, it's around 1.7 million, where we handle entire streets, and then we do this payment patching. Again, it's like a prevention is better than cure approach, where we try to handle those potholes before they potholes before they get bigger, and then the repair gets costly, and then we do some in-house. So this is that second part of that three-way program where we try to manage our asphalt program. The contractual, again, we, this time as part of the consortium, we teamed up with Lake Bluff, Highland Park, and Lincolnshire, and we bid the project as a combined joint project. As you can see from the bid prices, we did receive very favorable bids compared to last year, and we are right now, our estimate was around 117 grand, and the Lake Forest portion of the bid came around 114. The surprising one was the factor of the four-inch asphalt. Last year, we paid close to 73, and this year, we got at 36, so that was a pretty significant difference. Part of that could also be that we are also, we have, when we put our bid packets, last year, we just put that we need so much square yards of asphalt. This year, we took it a little step further, where we identified the areas, and we designated that this area is 25 square yards, this area is only 5 square yards. So the labor cost and the material cost makes a difference in that, because the smaller the area, the larger the labor intensive, the higher the price. So we were able to better fine-tune our specs to get a better price. So, and then again, we have a list of streets, which we develop every spring. With the streets and sanitation section, they go out and they look at the streets. We compare those streets with our annual overlay program, where we have tested each and every street with a, what we call is a structural number, one for the surface and one for the base, which is underneath the surface. And we match this particular list of potholes with that particular street listing to ensure that we are prioritizing those potholes based on the structural number, and it's not based on some priority. So, and with that, and based on the budget amount, we, you know, take care of the street potholes. Again, staff is recommending to go with the budgeted amount of 120 to take care of the potholes. Contractually, if approved, we like to start the program sometime in July and try to wrap it up by end of September.
Okay. Any questions? And we'll take this back up at the city council.
I did have one question. There was, once upon a time, and it was maybe a month or two ago, there was some discussion about, you thought these numbers were going to come in substantially below the budget, and you were looking at maybe moving forward on some overlay areas that had been scheduled for next year. Is that, is that part of this now?
It is. Like, if you recall, the original budget was around 80,000, and then as part of our March meetings, we upped the budget to 120. And also in the overlay program, we did add a one-lane, which was scheduled for next year. Because the prices came low, we added a one-lane to this year. And this fall, we're going to bring Convey Farms Drive as a separate pay item, I mean, as a separate budget item to resurface, again, to take advantage of the economy, and of course, with the tournament coming up, we like to schedule that as a standalone project. I mean, combined with our overlay, but as a standalone budget item. So we plan to bring that this fall. Thank you.
Thanks, Ramesh. Kathy, is there something else you can? Talk slowly.
Okay, I will talk slowly. Under ordinances on your regular council agenda, you do have a recommendation from the plan commission for tentative and final approval of the Alderwood subdivision. It's a pretty straightforward subdivision. I'm not sure it'll take 25 minutes, but I'll do my best.
Maybe you can complicate it somewhat.
The property proposed for annexation, or annexation, for subdivision is owned by the Thurbers. They formerly lived in the house, which is located on the western portion of the property. Property is just about nine acres. It's located on the west side of Wakegan Road, south of Regency Lane, and north of Cheswick, two other private roads. The proposal is for a two-lot subdivision. The Thurbers have moved out of town, and in marketing their property, they have received interest from a number of potential buyers about purchasing something less than the As I mentioned, the property is currently developed with a home on the western portion. There's also a pool and a tennis court in this area. The property is served by a private driveway, which also provides access to these three lots on the north side. This lot is actually also owned by the Thurbers, so they own this entire parcel. This property is separately owned, and this property is separately owned. All three of these parcels have legal access from this private driveway. There is an existing pond on the east side of the property, and existing vegetation. A drainage easement is actually placed on this property as part of the plat of subdivision. So this area here will be retained as a buffer and continue to buffer this area from Wakegan Road. This would be the buildable portion of the newly created lot. Just to highlight it a little more, both lots approach four acres in size. This property is zoned R4, with a minimum lot size of 60,000 square feet, so both lots significantly exceed the minimum lot size. The road will be an outlot to the subdivision. These two lots that are created as part of the subdivision will have maintenance responsibilities. There is an easement created as part of the plat to assure continued access for these three properties. The plan commission did recommend tentative and final approval, because this subdivision does not include construction of a road or other activity. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate later, in the, later at your regular meeting, to approve a motion granting tentative and final approval of the plat. Because this property is also in the overlay district, the historic residential open space district, it is a planned preservation subdivision, and by code also requires a special use permit, which simply authorizes the subdivision. So that will be a separate action. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. This does come to you with a unanimous recommendation from the plan commission, and it was noticed consistent with code requirements and consistent with standard practices, and there were no comments, no public testimony presented to the plan commission. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Filling time a little bit, so I'm trying to be creative. Just curiosity, the lot to the north that's between the two homes, is that a buildable
This lot right here is a buildable lot. It was created through a previous subdivision that created all three of those lots. It just happens to be in the ownership of the Thurbers.
Okay, and, yeah, the question that I know is very exciting as far as sanitary sewers, the item that's being recorded on title will require them eventually to hook up to the sanitary sewer system?
Correct. Sanitary sewer is currently on the other side of Wakegan Road, right up in this area. This area, you may, some of you may recall the Bishop Woods subdivision up in this area. Eventually, sewers need to be brought across Wakegan Road to serve a number of these properties. That is the best way to serve these properties. The existing houses are already on a septic system. If, for some reason, this lot develops before we have sanitary sewer available, you're correct, the note on the plat does require that an irrevocable petition in support of sanitary sewers be recorded with the D to the property.
And that's all I could come up with.
Any other questions? Any other items that you can think about us talking about before we adjourn? Anyone? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee of the hall is now adjourned. We will reconvene at 7:30 for the council meeting.